Call me in order please stand. My pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For a stand for a moment of silence please for all the men and women out there serving and protecting us so we're able to enjoy our freedoms and stay safe. Thank you. For this after most of the approved the minutes from both September 30th and October 17th. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trudell, any additions to reasons corrections? Hearing not all of your favor say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. First resolution is accepting New York State Stop DWI Grant and authorize the budget modification with the district attorney's office in the Stop DWI program. This total grant is in the budget or in the amount of $19,700. Motion by legislator Potter, second by legislator Kessler. Any explanations or anything?
The enforcement component of the Stop DWI program should be a primary focus of it. And this money allows us to address the crackdown periods during the holidays, to set up checkpoints and to do roaming controls. More of public awareness and getting people talking about it and being aware of it than it is to actually trying to make the rest. But having drunk driving off the road is better news for all of us.
Thank you. I also want to add congratulations on your recent award. Thank you. I know you received one down in Albany and we should be recognizing you shortly on that. So thank you. All in favor of this resolution, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. Next resolution PS2, Budget Modification, EMO Emergency Services Homeland Security Grant. This resolution carries an amount of $194,943. In your packet you'll find a listing of how that money will be spent. And then a motion. Legislator Klein, second by Kessler. Director Curry, you want to explain anything? Okay.
No.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. PS3, Budget Modification, 911 Overtime Payments. Moving $15,000 from salaries and wages to overtime payments within the 911 budget. Motion by legislator Trudell, second by legislator Kessler, discussion. Director.
Cover overtime with our short staffing and the additional training and stuff we had through the months of August and September. We've exhausted our overtime funds, so we need additional, but maybe through the end of the year. Still short staffing that we had, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Any not all in favor say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. Resolution number four is a reclassification of one physician in the sheriff's department. This is to move the current nurse practitioner to a physician assistant to reflect the work that they are doing. I entertain a motion on this, motion by legislator Kessler, second by legislator Potter. Sheriff, undersheriff, do you want to explain anything here? I know this goes along with Dr. Newsop and his guidelines for the medical end of the jail.
We actually hired some of his old qualified physician hired for us to change our job title. Same dollar amount of deal there now, but probably put her in the right classification.
Okay. Anything else, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. I did walk around a resolution. I gave them all what I get. It was a resolution for moving money in the sheriff's department for purchase 17 ballistic vests in the amount of $33,500. A little explanation on that, I think the undersheriff can do a little bit better than I can, so.
If we have actually 13 officers that their vests are outdated or will be outdated by the end of this year. There's a five-year lifespan on them. Some of the guys are probably six or seven years with the same vest. So for 13 of them, they're for current officers, but then we have the four recruits that are in the academy. So we'll need to get them vests. They should graduate the academy December 2nd, so we'll need to put them on the street that vest for them. So we're just looking to move the money so we can get it in this year's budget. Because the other problem we have with the uniform companies getting them, it takes a long time. He was putting the order in, now we're expecting that it's going to be at least eight weeks before we can get them.
Okay, did I have a motion on that? Motion by legislator Kessler, second by legislator Potter. I do want to, you can't let the reflect your, let the minutes reflect that I screwed up and dropped the ball on this. This was in my email and I forgot to approach for the agenda. So please don't let this reflect on the sheriff, I guess I'll take this one here. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. All right. Moving right along, I'm going to go into reports, EMO EMS.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'll be as brief as I can. Item number one, we've successfully completed our most recent FEMA graded exercise. This was at the Personnel Monitoring Center, which we set up and conduct with mostly staff with folks from the county health department. Exercise went very well, we have to do this demonstration once every eight years. So we made a lot of changes, a lot of updates. FEMA was very pleased with it. Item two, we just submitted to the state for hopefully the last review. The five-year update for the County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This has included all of the municipalities in the county with the exception of the town of Moletto. They decided they did not want to participate this time around. And this is an important item because when we have big storms, kind of like we had the other day, and we dodged the bullet with some further riverine flooding from that over the weekend. Municipalities that aren't included in this mitigation plan, which has to go through state approval and FEMA approval, are not eligible for as much money if money or support is available. So this has been long haul and it should be in the final moments of it. Item three, our staff provided five scenario-based training offerings for 67 county health department employees. This served as their annual incident command system refresher. And just coincidentally, this had been set up before, but the scenario we used was dealing with a significant hepatitis A outbreak. So timing of that was very appropriate. And item five, we're at the downhill end with the Lake Ontario flooding. We've had some work the last few weeks getting equipment returned from some of the municipalities. My understanding is that is all completed as of, I think, last Friday or Thursday. So right now we wait to see what the projects with the ready money bring, but that will have much impact for us all. And we've been working with county administrator to get our 2020 budget in.
Any questions, Trudell? Your name?
Need to just support the idea that Dale mentioned they didn't have the opportunity to attend the ISAC conference, which was the session where really we didn't have the opportunity to do that. And we did receive our results from New York State. They did approve our application to continue EMS education being of course sponsored for the next two years. So we were very pleased that the region and New York State approved that. Every month we have continuous holiday improvement meetings, so that was part of this month as well. Is to facilitate just continually watching our care, seeing how we're doing these specific topics. If there's really good practice that we want to highlight and encourage so we can have the best care out there for our constituents. In addition, I attended the St. Luke's evacuation exercise. Mind you, no patients are actually moved in these exercises, just to be very clear about that. They have hospital personnel who play patients. This was my first opportunity in the last couple of years being here, being able to go to a facility and participate in this type of event. It was very informative to see how if they had to move patients for whatever reason, this particular scenario was an extended power outage. How they go about doing that through the regional center and just to help them identify some of the things. For instance, Department of Health had given them a radio to contact their regional center. They didn't know how to use the radio. So certain things like that just helped them to identify resources to help them in their process and just something that they can work on for next time and also how we fit into that. Their expectations of us, they had an expectation that EMS might be able to help them move narcotics, which is not in line with New York State protocol. We did point out to them in their plan what they're, they do have a specified piece in their plan for moving of narcotics. So that clarification alone was very beneficial to the time. So looking forward, Pontiac's going to have one in the near future. Looking forward to be able to work with some of our partners just to strengthen our relationships in the event that we do have to help them in an emergency.
Okay, any questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add a observation. Everyone knows that every couple of years we have a full-scale federally evaluated nuclear drill where we practice even evacuation. We've gotten the results of that back, I shared it with the chairman and the vice chairman. But this involves almost every department in the county. And I think sometimes relax in letting those departments know how it came out. There were a few minor issues, but fortunately most of those had nothing to do with the county. They were under agencies. My words applied to the county were exceptional, excellent, things like that. So I just want to thank and congratulate all the departments here in EMO and this leadership hall, 911, the sheriff, all of the fire, EMS, all of you did an excellent job. And if anyone wants a copy of that evaluation, I have it, if you'd like to see it. Just good job all of you. Hopefully, it's good to know that it went well, hopefully we never have to use it.
Many other departments were involved.
Health, highway, like I said, 90% of our departments are promotional territory.
Let's tear so tonight.
Just one other quick note, the EMS advisory council meeting, that's usually held the last Monday of the month, had to be rescheduled for this week, so I do not have an agenda of minutes. Haven't been provided, but it is a public meeting, so I just wanted to let you know that it's all been moved to tonight at Moletto at 6:30 PM. If anybody wanted to join us.
Okay, Margaret?
Thank you. At ISAC, we passed Patty Ricky's bill to have at least nine one-one people recognize as important people. And we also for EMS that you are viable entity to be recognized by the governor. Now, has that finally passed all the way through, the governor signed that? As it went on, we passed it to send it on to the governor. Do you know whether that passed or that maybe?
Legislature has been adjourned since the end of June, they won't be back till January, so they haven't done it.
The way I heard that the governor signed those bills.
Well, it has passed.
Recommendation that they are vital.
Well, my understanding was that ones that EMS can be considered an essential service for the purpose of state aid.
Correct. Kevin, did you have some?
No.
Okay. Moving right along again, I entertain you for your reports. Did you guys have Mars?
Yeah, I just would like to make one comment. The governor's flying into our airport so we could nail him right there and sign these things.
There you go.
When he gets off the plane, do this before you go.
All right, Kevin.
All right, so this is the report for September, because it was in here last month and also really haven't been lining up for me to be able to get these students prior to stuff being submitted. So September, our numbers were actually down a little bit from where they were with summer, but that's typical. Our normal downswing is kids go back to school and college students are actually busy doing other things and causing trouble. So we did, September was busy for us otherwise though. We were actively involved with EMD certification, as you're all aware of, and we had to put all of our staff through. As well as being short-staffed, there was a lot of additional overtime, there was a lot of people beginning to help over and stuff. So that, all that attributed to the lowest number I've seen of our emergency call answers, calls answered within 10 seconds of 79%. So I am definitely seeing a turn in that now that the four recruits have come out of recruit academies at the beginning of October. So next month I'll have a better number to come back with. As far as activity, real quick for myself, busy with consortium stuff, a little bit of radio, Next Generation 91, continuing weekly conference calls with the, with NEA, the National Emergency Number Association. And then also every other week, New York State has a Next Gen 91 working group and I'm on those conference calls as well. Trying to stay in, working that coming down the pipeline. So that's all good technology stuff, but along with good technology comes high prices. We're trying to balance that and get the best for best options while not hanging ourselves into a corner where it's going to cost us millions and millions to try and keep up with what we need to do. So CSI was on, able to sit on a panel for a discussion on school safety and communications at United Radio down at Syracuse, along with somebody from Syracuse City Schools and a SUNY representative. And had some very good discussion on school communications, which is a good thing, something we're definitely focusing on in CSI. But majority of the month spent working on CAD stuff, preparing for Pro Qwago Live, which was the beginning of October, that went as planned on time. We were well supported by the company as well as our staff, of the staff. In order to get to that, all of our staff, like I mentioned, had to go through EMD certification at the beginning of September. And then they also had a combined of about another four and a half hours or four and a half hours of self-training, online training, running through individual scenarios and stuff like that. So that got us to a point where all of our emergency medical dispatch protocol now, as opposed to having the call takers flip through the actual physical cards and read through the rating that's on separate from the computer. It's all in the computer and it asks them question by question and it directs them into the next step based off the responses of the question prior to it. So that's also allowing us to provide additional information to the first responders. It's going out in the text messages and in their closeout reports and stuff now. So they're actually seeing all of the questions and the answers that the non-1 call takers is taking. Again, so it gives them a little bit more insight when they get to a scene. Or if they leave the scene and say, hey, why was this this particular level? They can actually go look and see what the actual question, the answer for is the questions. They get there and somebody's not actually having difficulty breathing, but they told us they were, things along those happen. So spent a lot of time working on that, that was the majority of the month and a lot of extra hours on that as well. Was able to stick in attending ISAC, because I do sit on the Public Safety Committee for that. And we heard on those ready issues that we pass through, so was able to speak to the non-1 piece of that. So having that ISAC supportive, that non-1 telecommunicator reclassification is definitely important as well as. That's pretty much what I had for September.
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, moving along, Don, your report?
Thank you. Monthly report, again, pretty self-explanatory. One item I'd like to note under training, we start tomorrow a hazmat technician training class. It's 44 hours, it'll be three days this week. And a couple of weeks from now, the other three days, 27 people signed up. Some are refresher, but that's going to give us about 21 or 22 new technician level people for the hazmat response team. Right now, signups are some from the county, city of Oswego, and majority are from the Bellas. So 27 in that class, so that's going to be very good.
Did you say 22 new ones?
There'll be new, there are new hazmat techs, yep. Some of the other things we've been working on. Engine 91 concept is where, it's just what it's referred to as. 91 means it's a regional engine that's staffed for that time period. So let's say Battalion 1 does it quite a bit, might be out of Phoenix on Friday night. And they have a combined crew from Phoenix, Bonny, and let's say Grandy Center, and they run on calls of Battalion 1. Battalion 3 is looking at, we've tried it, a couple of other battalions. Battalion 2 and 3 tried it for a little while, didn't seem to work well. Battalion 4, it never got off the ground, but right now Battalion 3 is taking it on again to try. And it's just to have an added resource available when, you know, certain peak times that if they can put an engine together where some of the areas might have been short-staffed, it's just one more resource. So we're working on that. Our fire investigation team, the state, made some changes about a year and a half ago and said by April of 2020, every fire investigator had to be nationally certified, that they would no longer have a New York State Level 1 or Level 2 classification. So being that a big portion of our fire investigation team are younger people, a lot of us took it before they had national certification. So we've been working for about the last year of doing review classes and getting people ready for that. We had 18 people take it from the county in Oswego City and all 18 passed. So that's good, because I tell you, I came out of the test thinking, okay, I can miss 30 of them and still pass. But I get a warm fuzzy feeling after the national certification test, but everybody passed, so that was very good. The next piece of mine, the activity report itself is pretty self-explanatory. So any questions on that before I move on? Okay, for Fire Advisory Board. Fire Advisory Board has been looking at different ways that we can address recruitment and retention. We're doing this for a while, we've tried some different things, thought in speaker and stuff. One of the things that is going on right now, we're looking at putting together a video to get into the high schools level and share it. So let's just say like Mexico School District is a combination of Mexico Fire Department, Thermo Fire Department, New Haven Fire Department. In the past, it's always been maybe one department will go in and do something. What we're trying to do is get all three together and get a good video presentation. So with the same message is going out in all the different high schools. So we're working on that. We're working with the city public safety class and trying to get them a little bit more active. The students that are in the fire protection group, more active as interns and stuff. One of the major things that's coming out, the New York State Fire Coordinators Association has done a survey over the last, it's been just a little over a year. And that survey data, some of it's out, but not officially. It's coming out with the Regional Fire Administrators Conference on the 14th, so I'll have more information on that afterwards. But some of the things they're looking at and pushing for is some better communications, getting out information on better understanding of volunteers, better overall, how do we get the communities more involved in recruitment and retention? One of the things they're going to be looking for, and I know legislator Trudell was at our last meeting and we discussed this heavily. But one of the things they're looking for and will be looking for at the state level or county level and state level is to get some of the laws changed so that we can offer incentives. So there's some different incentives out there, there's some tax breaks, stuff like that, but they're very low. Income tax break is, I think, 200 bucks. I mean, that's better than nothing, but when you think about it, it's not much. There's, there was, used to be, there's been some discussion about maybe putting it back in. It's a property tax break, but that gives you like, I think, $3,000 off your assessed value. When you really look at what that's worth as far as a tax break, it's not much. Okay, it's dollars. Some of the things they've looked at, and again, I don't have all the data from the state report yet, but they've looked at paid-on call. So you would take a firefighter and when he, if they had a paid-on call program, he would be paid a certain amount for calls, to go to calls. So a little more incentive, there's two or three other programs like that. Unfortunately, right now in New York State, they are really, you can't do that. So what we need to do is, once they're identified, I think we need to help across the state get these changed in laws so that we can start trying to implement some of that. Again, to try to keep, one of the things is with a paid-on call, the way New York State law reads right now, you can't pay a volunteer. Well, we already discussed, we went through a couple of years ago, a lot that.
Four years.
Has it been four years?
At least.
But, you know, there are municipalities out there that can afford a career department, a paid department. But if you could go to something like paid-on call, it's giving the individuals a little bit of incentive to make the calls, to up our response, but again, right now it's illegal. So that's going to be coming more and more. Like I said, the information from the survey comes out on the 14th and I'll have more information after that.
Right?
I was hoping that, you know, you were going to get into this a little bit. Did everybody see in the news, I think it was about three weeks ago, there was a house fire. They had to bring in 10 or 12 fire departments, it was a daytime fire. Where was it?
Which one? Sandy Creek?
It was a daytime, it was a daytime fire and they did a big story about it on, you know, the news that night. You know, emphasizing the lack of volunteers and the lack that they had because it was a daytime fire. They had to bring in so many different departments, okay? This goes back to, this goes back to the point that four years ago, we had a committee formed where we tried to look into the possibility of creating a county-wide fire district with, you know, four house, you know, four physicians within the county that would alleviate that problem. Because it's a safety for the taxpayer and a safety for the, you know, the firefighters that are going. You're getting less and less of them, not because they don't want to be it, but the requirements are high. It's in the daytime they're working. Now, it used to be that, you know, in North Carrier, you wouldn't be able to be allowed to leave work and not get penalized for it and be able to collect your pay while you went, you know, to fight a fire. I don't know if that would be something that, you know, that they do anymore, but that's, what you're looking at, it's going to come down to at some point in time again in the future, that you're going to have to look at a county-wide fire district. In order to be able to take care of, you need somebody that's on call all the time. You're going to be able to send them right to the fire, not have to wait for them to get out of work and be able to get there and they would coordinate with the volunteer fire departments, not eliminating volunteer fire departments. And that's not what we were looking for. We were looking to make sure that the safety of everybody that went to that fire was taken care of and that's what you're looking at still. You're still looking at that. It's going to happen, if you work too long, you're going to have to go to that, because it's getting harder and harder. It's not like the old days, everybody knows, you just go down to the fire hall and you're a volunteer player. Not that easy.
Richard?
Don, just a quick question here, maybe you know what, or maybe has, hasn't been answered, Nash. If we went to this paid-on call, say hypothetically, the individual gets $30 an hour. Maybe that person should for the amount of training. But that's neither here nor there. The point is, where's that, is there ever been a discussion of who's going to pay it? Is it the municipality? Is it the, a number of municipalities that one fire, the fire company serves? Like for example, Claude Noye, which serves several different towns? Is there any discussion about that?
I mean, a little bit, but not, no, not to the point where, you know, it's been thrown out, well, you know, is there money from the state? There is some safer grant money out there right now because the way the laws are written, it wouldn't qualify, but if the laws were changed, it might qualify, so you might be able to get grant money. Typically, I mean, discussions have been, it would fall back on the individual department and doing it through the municipalities through their contracts. So it would be, you know, I mean, that's, would depend on what we could find for funding.
Definitely, a discussion that's been ongoing in the Fire Advisory, and I know that the folks who are members of that board have been working diligently on that over the last couple of years and try to put something together. But that just adds to the burden that they have outside of training and being a volunteer fire person as well. So definitely understand that, and I do know that I can speak for this committee and say, you know, anything that we can do, we're more than welcome to, or more than happy to help if we can. My vice chair here, myself, a couple of times a week, we have a conference call just to update us. We kind of shared the duties of what's going on with the public safety departments, and that was one discussion regarding the tax exemption for property taxes. That discussion came to us from real property, so it is on the radar, something that was just brought up. We thought maybe that would be something we wanted to just talk to Fire Advisory before we brought anything forward. So we definitely want to work with you on this and keep us all moving together here.
All right. Let's move right along.
Last one I have is a request, and this doesn't come just from me and Fire Advisory. I'm hearing it from all the fire departments. We had a huge problem. As most of you have seen in the news and stuff, a very unfortunate situation about a month ago now where we had a car strike one of the Amish buggies and ended up in, I'll say, three fatalities. The woman that was one of the passengers in the buggy and the two horses. And it's not the first one. We have them, we just had another one a week ago in Plaski, which fortunately nobody got seriously hurt. But they're all, and they're getting more and more. We've had several where we've had to up having to have horses put down. Fortunately, any of the ones we've had, we've had some serious injuries to passengers, but this last one was the first fatality from it. But everything I've researched and looked at, it comes down to county level. And there are counties in New York State that have laws, there's counties in areas in Pennsylvania. I think we need, as a county, needs to look at a law that requires them to have better reflective devices, similar to slow-moving farm vehicles, that needs to do more awareness for signs on the roads and stuff, public awareness, you know, like there's one here, this was out of Ohio, but it was a public announcement that they put out, and it shows traffic and it shows the closing distance of a vehicle doing fifty-five miles an hour coming up on a buggy that's doing five miles an hour, and stopping distances. And just some public awareness and stuff. But I think the law, or whatever it would be called itself, needs to be done on a county level, and I think it needs to address some of those things. One, the visibility. I know there are some in Pennsylvania that not only require reflective, but they also require lights after dark, even though they're faint, but they can specify the candle power and stuff. And I think that needs to be addressed. I think the other hazard that needs to be addressed along with that is the messes they leave along the road. Pennsylvania and I think it's St. Lawrence County and maybe Skyler County require them to have poop bags on the horses. That's a big problem. If you talk to some motorcycle riders, that's dangerous. And we have had some incidences from that. So I think the whole thing needs to be looked at, but I think we need, as a county, need to be proactive. We're not getting any less. They're buying more and more farms. This last one we had that was actually in Mexico, was right at the Thermo, Mexico Town Line, was because they were going down on County Route Four to look at property where they're going to be building a new farm. So it's getting bigger.
No, and I'm glad you brought that up and put it on the agenda. That was another concern and focus of one of our conference calls this week as a result of that death. And it's something that, just kicking it around, we did, it's going to take a lot of people being involved, a lot of different departments, a lot of different legislators that have a lot of these people in their area. I know that a previous legislator had a good standing relationship with a pastor who was in the Amish community. I think it would be important to include them in when we're doing this too because we need to make sure that they understand. And, you know, I'll be honest with you too, it's their religious beliefs and we have to be able to respect that as well. But at the same time, it's the safety of everybody who's out there, and safety physically and also emotionally because that can take a real toll. So we have to find and have people media in mind there, but we definitely have to do something. So I'm glad that you brought it up, Don, and it will be something that we'll be acting on very shortly.
Caution on that, and you know some research on this. It's based on a particular sect, what is allowed, what is not allowed. And they've had pretty good success at fighting counties. Well, I think they do not want that on nurse, it's not allowed in those sects. They've had, based on religious freedoms, they've had pretty good success at fighting county level.
And one thing that I did bring up to the vice chair was that our senator was very active in St. Lawrence County when they did that, and she had a good working relationship, and you're absolutely right, Chair. I was going to actually lean on her for a little bit of advice of what went on up in St. Lawrence County with how they've been because you're absolutely right, I mean, that's why, that's why I bring up, it's their religion and we have to be cautious of that as well.
Margaret?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the last two years that I've been going through the Tubke Commission, they've had a program every year, a class or whatever you want to call it, on the Amish, and it has been done by the state troopers most of the time, and the state troopers explain what the laws are. They also explain what the law is for the county, state, and power, villages and stuff. And what their law is, is like the sheriff said, it's religious for some of the things. And they have spread the word at that, up there to let you know that they have the right to be on the road, and we have to watch what we're doing when we're behind them or coming upon them. And the stuff that, Don says, they are getting more and more and they're spreading out. But yes, we have been, at least I have been through two of these meetings, they all say the same thing. It's what you know, the sheriff said, that people around here need to understand what the law is. And now I even say I'm over here in Oswego City, and I happened to go into Ollie's and come an Amish lady, and I was quite surprised that they even had this close to the city here, wherever they are.
Well, they can ride vehicles too, Margaret, not just cars. But I will, I will let you know, yesterday, okay, I took a combine with a twenty-foot grainhead up the road, and I had a vehicle in front of me, a vehicle behind me, the combine in bright red, had a big X M V A emblem sign on it, and all the lights going whatsoever. But I still had a vehicle ahead of me and a vehicle behind me. And that was out of respect for the people who might be coming down that road. Do I have committee people first? Okay.
I am chairman of the Oswego County Traffic Safety Board. I went to the Slow Moving Vehicle Symposium in Syracuse earlier this year. I've had extensive discussions with Sheriff Ron Spike from Yates County, who is a nationally recognized expert on this topic. With Sergeant Bernie Kennett with the New York State Police, who has spoke with our, Sheriff, what'd you call the, the? He's talked to the bishop of the...
Sect.
Sect, sect, thank, I couldn't come up with sect.
Just keep talking, we'll fill up the place.
Sergeant Kennett has spoken with them, has had limited success here. However, on the heels of the Mexico fatality, we are in discussion of trying to coordinate a training seminar, proposing to have it in Plaski because as Margaret pointed out, you need the public there. You need both aspects to understand their concerns. For instance, we're driving down the road and you see a stationary object. You have a concept of your closing speed on that. But if that object is moving at any speed at all, your mind does not have a concept of your closing speed. Those are some of the things that Ron Spike teaches. He's willing to come here and put on a ninety-minute training seminar, and then we can have breakout sessions to actually discuss what the county might be able to do. I would suggest Sergeant Kennett be there as well and what he has done from the state police. The Traffic Safety Board reports through the Legislative Health Committee, but I would like to work with anybody that has concerns on this, pull us all together as a county and get moving forward. Everybody seems to have a pretty good handle on different aspects of it, we need to pull it all together.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Definitely be included in that. Pretty sure I rattled off your name when I was talking to the vice chair here, so, N A.
There's a position up in Plaski, which for a lot of the Amish that end of the county, a position basically serves as the position for a lot of the Amish community. Fortunately, I got to go on a couple of corridor calls. He's been a great Amish bud, Amish bud man, please onto that group. I'm happy to reach out to him, this is the dogs, and they could be one to help us.
Okay, so it sounds like we get it.
I just wanted to ask, have you ever had any of your crew or anybody go to the large animal rescue things? And I know because we have that state here all the time. Okay, thank you.
We're all over that.
Before we leave fire, just going forward, the discussions about volunteer fire, just keeping your hat, that that's not just a fire, it's just in the MS.
You're right, you're right. If you go to that meeting tonight, you'll hear a lot of that, I'm sure, of those concerns.
Okay, moving right along, probation?
As far as raising the age. Since October of last year, when the legislation started, we had twenty-two sixteen-year-olds that had come through for intake and early, and three have gone to U. Park Court. So obviously, our numbers are much lower than what we expected. Seventeen-year-olds joined the group a little over a month ago, October first. We haven't had any that have come through yet, so we'll see what happens with that. As far as the CBI, we just finished our fifth group in the jail last Friday. We had seven of us that graduated from the program. We're starting another group today, actually, that's going to be just women. We had seven women that are in the group next week. And our grant will be due for next year, so we're actually adding another type of program, interactive journaling to the mix, so we're going to be kind of running one group and then be between all different departments.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, we have Aaron Albrecht from the Oswego County Search and Rescue Team here. So he has a report he'd like to give us, and then we'll go right into his portion of the budget, take care of that, and move forward. All right, Aaron, so wanted to hear your report with us, and we'll go from there.
Thanks for your support. Total call-out so far this year, thirty-five nineteen of those have been activations. In just the last month, we had four Project Lifesaver activations where we assisted Oswego Police, Oswego County Sheriff's, and Phoenix Police. All those searches were successful, and we had a total of forty-five volunteer man-hours put into those four searches. Where that brings a Project Lifesaver incidence for the year in our county to eleven. We also had a display at Southern Square Apple Festival. We're promoting our Hug a Tree program, which is a national program to teach kids and their parents as well what to do if they get lost and, you know, hug a tree and stay in one spot and so we can come and find them. To follow up on the Great Bear Springs that Janet brought up previously, additional signage has been added in that park, and they've also cleared some brush on some trails that were previously closing in. It could be harder to navigate. Because of their funding, they had quit printing hard copy maps to have the kiosk there. So our team has picked that up and we're, they've got a stack of maps to fill up at the kiosk regularly. And then we also trained in there this month so we can continue to be familiar with the trails. And we invited Valony Fire Department with their U T V and practice patient transport evaluation backwards there. And border patrol also gave a lesson to our folks on man-tracking. We're going to be doing another Hug a Tree in Parrish this month. And in December, we're going to have an informational night at Brewer's Fire Department on our upcoming academy, which will start beginning in February.
Any questions for Aaron?
Sounds like you've been telling.
I know we want to thank you, I know it's all volunteer and all your services that you put in. You really do a great job, I know you're just another tool in the tool bag here for us, and we really definitely appreciate it. I didn't call you a tool. I didn't know exactly what it was saying.
Implement, implement.
Does the water, which, do you work with them at all?
Recently, we have not, no.
I don't need that paper.
We aren't familiar that that's a recent, we need it.
Okay, so on page seven, you'll find the halfway down through, you'll find O C S R, and it's a four-thousand-dollar budget. I will entertain a motion to remove search rescuers. What'd you say? Move, oh, okay. Motion by Legislature Klein, second by Legislature Trudell. Any questions? Now, if you ever say aye, any opinions? Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
In your budget, Aaron, your packet, you'll see the year-to-date available budget report. Since how we're going through the budget, we thought it would be a good idea to make sure you know where we stand at this point in time, so they are there for your references. If you have any questions, you can ask the county administrators at a later point. We're going to start on the budget for the District Attorney, Stat D W R I, Drug Task Force, page twelve. I will give you a little note that on the District Attorney, nine-one-one, Sheriff, in probation, they're going to, they're all kind of interconnected with the new criminal justice reforms. There's a PowerPoint that we're going to reference as we go through here and to try to explain how those changes are going to affect this budget because there is a great impact on our budget thanks to Governor Cuomo in New York State. District Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Jerry. I provided everyone with a handout this morning, it's hard copy, the PowerPoint presentation. Sometimes it's a little bit easier to raise in front of you. This PowerPoint presentation was put together really through the Public Safety Group with Sheriff Hilton, Kevin Cooley, Dave Paul, and myself, working together, a lot of coordination, and wrote a lot of info as well for Legislature Wilber. And I just want to thank you for your help through this process. One of these I want to try to do today is kind of give you a brief synopsis of the major changes of law that are coming next year. Earlier this year, the state legislature approved, and the governor signed reforms touching upon discovery, bail reform, and speedy trial. You may have read some of the articles that are out there that are in bail reform, but now that's going to impact us, and the idea that a number of people who, as of right now, would be needing to be confronted with a judge, arraigned, have bail sent on them or remanded to the jail. Instead, they're going to be issued appearance tickets, or when they do show up for arraignment, instead of having bail sent on them, being R O R, or at least on their own recognizance. I guess with the Kiki promises, they're going to show back up again. I think it's going to create a lot of extra work or law enforcement from my office. But one of the areas that hasn't been... But one of the areas that hasn't been discussed is the changes in discovery. And that's really what this is kind of focused on today. Basically, you know, looking at discovery, looking at it prior to the enactment of the new law. Criminal Procedure Law, Section 245, basically completely replaces the discovery law that's in place right now. So there's a quick graphic base that's showing, here's kind of the streamlined process that happens right now. When there's a discovery request. Basically, under the new law, this is a visual representation of what's going to happen in the interplay coordination that's going to have to take place between law enforcement, nine-one-one, the DA's office, and where the court system is. Basically, in a nutshell, the 245 creates automatic discovery. It greatly expands everything that must be required. Under current law, defendants entitled to discovery on misdemeanors. Only when they file a discovery demand, they have to give us written notice. And it's limited to certain items that are set forth in the Criminal Procedure Law. Anything else out of those particular items, they don't get immediately. But if the case is going to go to a hearing or trial, they can get those at a later time or as the items become available. Basically, for felonies, they're not entitled to discovery unless and until an indictment's filed. And typically, if they waive indictment, the superior court information's filed, we typically don't have an exchange of discovery because we've reached an agreement of what the disposition is going to be. Essentially, what the new law does is say, you're now going to have to provide, by you meaning the DA's office, have to provide discovery in every single case that's charged. For every felony, for every misdemeanor, for every violation. And to make it even more fun, presently, we don't provide discovery in any vehicle traffic ticket, speeding ticket, cell phone tickets. We now have to provide discovery on every single BPL ticket that's issued. Essentially, the statute goes forward and says, essentially, you have to give everything that you have relative to the case and turn it over. They go, in the statute, it sets forth twenty-one particular categories, but it makes very clear that that's not exhaustive. It's supposed to be illustrative, use as examples. And then basically, we have to give it as soon as practicable and no later than fifteen days from arraignment. It says that there can be an automatic extension of thirty days if the discovery in that particular case is exceptionally voluminous. So, you know, the standard petty larceny, burglary, homicide, rape case isn't going to apply. If there's a homicide case, that may fall into the category of being exceptionally voluminous, but we don't quite know because the courts haven't told us what's going to fall for. And then basically, we apply to the court for an extension for a good cause. But again, that's going to be the exception rather than the rule. Again, the one page goes forward and shows all the types of things that we have to provide. And then basically, when we talk about automatic discovery, it applies to everything that's in the possession of the DA's office, but also everything that's under our custody or control, under our direction or control. The idea of that, the law presumes that any law enforcement agency in the county is under the direction, control of the DA's office. I wish that were so. But essentially, that if the deputy, sergeant, investigator has information, has something in possession, or has knowledge of something, we are charged and have the knowledge of that information as well. Essentially, what it says is, if a person pleads to a crime, a felony, a misdemeanor, that they have to get discovered. They cannot waive discovery. So Kevin gets charged with burglary in the first degree, and I decided to make it sweet as steel, I'll run it off of a petty larceny, where he just pleads to a misdemeanor instead. Because he's pleading to a crime of petty larceny, he has to get discovered. And you have to do it for every one of those cases. It sets forth certain timelines, and we have to keep the offers open. But essentially, what it says is, you know, again, vehicle, traffic tickets, violations that disorderly conducts, harassments, the defendant can waive, can waive discovery, but we cannot ask. It's explicitly written into the statute that we cannot condition any offer on a waiver of discovery. So again, I want to offer that petty larceny to Kevin to move the case. I can't say to his attorney, hey, you know what, it would save me so much work. I can't hit, I can't ask, I can't even get close to that, or else it puts the case in jeopardy and creates ethical issues for the prosecutor and the office as well. And once we provide all that discovery, we have to give a certificate of compliance to the court in which we set forth that we've complied, we've given everything. There's a question as to how much specificity we have to give in that certificate of compliance. And the recommendation within the DA's group is, we give more specificity rather than less because we don't know when that line is at this point. And then essentially, that certificate of compliance affects our ability to be ready for trial. Today, if Kevin gets arrested for a petty larceny, we have filed from Fulton Police Department. We can look at it, we send a notice of readiness to the court saying we can be ready for trial. So if the court schedules a trial thirty days from now, we can be ready to have a Mrs. lineup. We cannot give that notice of readiness to the court until we comply with all the discovery. So again, that has to be done within fifteen days of arraignment. So right now, quite frankly, we have files from police agencies. Days, weeks, once in a great while, a couple of months after an arrest has been made, and once a defense has been arrested and gone in front of a judge. That cannot be the practice going forward, starting in January. From the moment they appear in front of a judge and they get arraigned, we have fifteen days to collect everything from the police agency, have my office review it, analyze it, and get notifications that were required to, which we'll talk about a little bit. And then ultimately, get that to the defense and in their hands within the fifteen days. Basically, if we don't meet that obligation, that basically the court can impose sanctions, starting with an adverse jury instruction, basically saying, we went to trial. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, the DA's office didn't provide everything to the defense at time. You may have heard that the DA's office essentially has something hide where the information was adverse to them, and that's why it wasn't provided at that time. Whatever consideration you wish. More likely to know the court's going to say, look, you're going to be able to sign a police report, that witness is not going to be able to testify. That evidence is not going to be able to be submitted, the court's going to preclude it. Or the court can ultimately look at it and dismiss the case outright. I tend to think that most judges are not going to dismiss a case outright because then that decision's on the judge. Instead, what's probably going to happen is the judge is going to say, all right, these five witnesses are not going to be able to testify. Your drugs are not going to be able to administer again. The judge, I don't have a case. Well, then you mean, why don't you make a motion to dismiss, Mr. Prosecutor? And then we, as the people, are making the motion to dismiss without it being on the court's shoulders. Again, we talked about our pieces of what's required. Last year, we gave honest to goodness full discovery of probably sixty to eighty felony cases that we had, where basically the person was indicted, the post-indictment, the court set up a discovery schedule, we had to provide them on everything. We gave honest to goodness discovery of maybe a dozen to twenty misdemeanor violation cases because most of the time, we would just give the defense, copy whatever we have in our file, don't take a look at it. We don't need to see photos, we don't need to see body, warrant, cameras, footage. We've got enough information to make a decision. That can't be the case going forward. So right now, again, probably maybe a hundred pieces per year we get full disclosure. Next year, we're going to have to give it over three thousand pieces. And you figure we have roughly seven-hundred-and-fifty felonies per year, over two thousand misdemeanors, a few hundred violations. And again, that doesn't include the fifteen thousand-plus traffic tickets that we're going to have by discovery. So the issues for our office to come, basically, I mean, working with police, how do we identify all the information that's out there? How do we collect it? Get it to the DA's office, get it examined, reviewed, get it copied, and then transmitted and received by the defense within that period of time. And this kind of just a flow chart of general responsibilities and what we have to do at each step as we're going forward. And again, when we talk about the challenges, again, we're talking with sheriff's office, the state police, with just three different barracks, two city police departments, three village police departments, two different university police departments, as well as the D E C. I have to say, though, the sheriff and each one of the law enforcement agencies have been fantastic. They've been working for weeks or months, rather, trying to set up a system, trying to come up with focal points as to how we can carry this out. And again, I have to say, the sheriff's been exceptional in working on this, trying to come up with ideas that we could implement with other law enforcement agencies as well. Again, so when we get basically far more, what we're going to have to do is go through, look and check this, and make sure we have all the items. So comparing the police agency's checklist to what we actually got. Is there page missing? Is there something to give the court? They tried to give us video, but it actually got corrupted. Obtaining those missing items, basically converting some of those records from digital to analog, to paper, to CDs, flashbacks, I mean, vice versa, that we're going to have that challenge. Again, one of the requirements that they added was, we have to identify and list, every officer was involved in the case. We have to list every witness who was involved in an interview by police, providing contact information for other witnesses. Again, so if you think a bar fight occurs, forty, forty, fifty people in the bar, normally, the police would respond, talk to the victim, talk to the bartender, a few people. Now say, look, the guy in the red sugar on the lanyard, he's the one who started the fight. They go over, Don said, yeah, I started the fight, he's a jerk. Correct, you're going to save up for a few people. We get the video camera, great, it shows Don started the fight. And now we need to get, police have to identify every person there who's a witness, get names, contact information, so we have to provide that to the defense. And for any person who's potentially a witness that tried, within that first fifteen days, in a trial that may never occur for months down the road, we, as the prosecution, identify who we're going to call as witnesses, and provide criminal histories for every person who's potentially a witness in their first fifteen days. So again, the bar fight with forty, fifty people, my staff will now have to write criminal histories. Forty, fifty people, again, most of whom may have not even seen it, or have limited views. This is what the state legislators are requiring us to do. And again, when we talk about, you know, all the digital evidence that's out there, it's fantastic. Sometimes it's the best way to reveal truth and what actually happened, but it comes with a cost as far as productivity. Again, when we talk about digital evidence, we're talking about recording evidence, evidence, audio, video, body cam footage, closed circuit television, nine-one-one records. Basically, one of the requirements, every nine-one-one call comes in. We have to provide a copy of the call, we have to get a copy of the CAD report, we have to coordinate with nine-on-ones, and every officer radio transmission associated with that. So if it's a petty larceny of Walmart of a three-dollar sub, the nine-one-one gets called, we have to give the nine-one-one call, the CAD report, when the officer radios in that he's going to the scene, when he radios that he's there at the scene, when he clears the scene. Somebody in Kevin's department's going to have to go through and locate each of those radio transmissions. So we can provide those, that that's something, quite frankly, that they're never going to use, they're never going to listen to, but we have to provide it in order to certify that we've complied with the law. Again, patrol phone calls between victims, defense sometimes, jail phone calls. And when we think about all this, we, as the DA's office, have to review all this evidence before we can provide, turn it over to the defense. Because one of the requirements is, if there's something in there that's favorable to the defendant, something that would be exculpatory, we have to not just say, hey, here's all the information. You, as a defense attorney, listen to it, dig through it. But we have to point out, hey, this is potentially Brady material, this is potentially helpful. The officer conducted a four-hour interview, two and a half hours in, your client said something that may have been an indication of his rape, remained silent. You might want to look at it, two hours and thirty-two minutes later. One of our county court judges is now saying that for any audio or video recording, we have to specify by the minute, any statements that we want to use in these recordings. So before we can turn them over to the defense, somebody in my office is going to have to sit to the recording, to the interview, it's not only one call, watch the body camera footage. And again, you think of, if they're seeing, you could have four or five officers showing up at the same scene. But if it goes on for an hour and a half, we now have five officers, times an hour and a half, and somebody's got to sit and watch that body camera footage. I guess the analogy I would make to you when we talk about the analysis being put on us, this meeting right now is being recorded. Every one of the committee meetings are being recorded for public information. At the top of this meeting, we had the reading of the minutes from last session. At the legislative meeting here in a couple of weeks, you're going to have a reading of the minutes from last month. Now imagine you had to begin every legislative meeting, not just reviewing minutes, but watching the entire meeting from the month before. And before you could vote on any resolution, you'd have to watch the video recording of the Health and Human Services meeting, Government and Courts, Public Safety, so that you know, that's essentially what's being asked of us. And not just watch it, but, oh, yeah, I noted that Milford made some notes there. Now we have to go get Milford's notes, provide those, so that somebody has whatever Milford wrote down. That's essentially what's being required. Again, we've been identifying the witnesses, identifying the Brady material. Again, we've talked about Rosario material. Right now, the prior statements of a witness, somebody's going to testify at a hearing or trial, we don't have to disclose until, basically shortly before the hearing or trial. But grand jury minutes and grand jury proceedings are kept secret for a reason. So that we can have witnesses come in, civilians come in, to give honest testimony without fear of retribution or reprisal, so they can come in and tell the truth. We have always been able to tell witnesses at the grand jury that the grand jury proceeding is secret, and the defendant's not going to know that he testified or what he testified about unless this goes to trial.
Was this just a lawsuit or something Rosario? Is that like some lawsuit that I referenced?
Uh, but basically, what it means...
Way to cost us more money, I figure.
Uh, but the Rosario material means, any prior written statements of a witness who's testifying at a hearing or trial, we have to give it over to the defense, whether it's written, whether it's reported. But that includes grand jury testimony. Well, the problem is, we now have to give that grand jury testimony to the defendant within fifteen days of arraignment. The secrecy is going off the window. If there's something compelling, we can have a court protective order, which the court may or may not grant. But again, if court doesn't grant it, that eyewitness that we're depending on, the neighbor who saw something, he didn't want to come forward, well, now that testimony is going to be out. Quite frankly, in larger cities, where there's more gang activity, this is to make up the Witness Elimination Act. But we do have some of those cases here in our county, and I think it's going to make it much harder for witnesses, for us to get witnesses to cooperate.
Right. As the grand jury pieces, any of that being challenged in court? And when I say challenged in court, this law being challenged.
I don't, I don't know of anybody who's challenging this law overall. Again, at this point, you know, there's a number of agencies and organizations that are concerned about it. There's been some talk that this may be constitutionally questionable, regardless of its passing.
No, that's good, that answered my question.
A lot of it comes to, when we ask the questions, we're told, that'll be settled in court when you're sued. So our job, as the department has, is to make sure it's not a single county, let's have other agency pieces. So we have to try to be in compliance to keep from being the test case. Because we can't afford, as a county, to have Rich Mitchell in court constantly answering.
Yeah, my specific question was here about making a confidential grand jury, but you've answered my question, we can go on, thank you.
So again, when we, when we talked about, again, we can go through and redact the identity of confidential informant, undercover officers, but we have to notify the defense that there was information that we redacted, and they can then make a motion in court for us to have to disclose it. Again, that's potentially litigation. We can ask for protective orders so we don't have to disclose it. If the court grants it for either side, the opposite side has an immediate right to appeal to a Call Division judge. So now this case is going to get mired in a... So now this case is going to get mired in appellate issues going forward that we're going to have to deal with. And again, the defendant, they testify by grand jury, potentially, before we schedule something for a grand jury, before we carry out grand jury, at least forty-eight hours in advance of grand jury, we have to give the defendant every statement that's associated with that defendant or co-defendant, and again, in whatever form, whether it's in writing, whether it's recorded, and if it's not even in writing or recorded, if it's an oral statement to the man or the deputy, we have to give a summary of what that testimony might be. So if they want to testify, they know what they said, so they don't get tripped up to give inconsistent statements. Essentially, we've been trying to find a way through this, technology is going to help us, but it's not a cure. Technology can help us gather and organize information, it can help us transmit information between the agencies and the DA's office, and the DA's office, for defense of court, but it doesn't substitute for the officer that's got to go through and make sure everything's in that case file. It doesn't come for the officer that's got to go through, make sure every deputy who was somehow involved at the scene, even if they're just basically holding a flashlight, to make sure that their name and information ends up in the police report. Again, collecting information from all the witnesses. Technology doesn't have the ADA to review everything, because again, that certification can't just be a general certification for an office, that it has to be an attorney in the office certifying, judge, we provided this, and the defense then has an opportunity in court to challenge, well, jeez, Brett said he provided this, we have all discovered and we're right, judge, I don't know if they're actually right, I want to have almost another mini hearing, as to whether or not we provided, defense officially provided. But again, there's lots of equipment that we're going to need to be able to carry out our functions. Again, I'm going to have to order all grand jury transcripts, and if there's expedited. Again, right now, we only order the grand jury transcripts if there's motions filed against it, the defense is challenging it. Again, probably sixty to seventy percent of indicted cases, maybe sixty percent ordering transcripts, the child would be a hundred percent. The bigger, one of the big issues it's going to cost is basically for his testing. One of the issues that's going to impact public safety. We now have to give lab reports, not just the lab reports for any testing that's done, but we have to give a curriculum vitae, resume, or CD, whenever performed the test, we have to give ten years' worth of qualifying tests they've taken, any tests they've taken to make sure they're proficient and competent, we have to give the results of those tests, any publications that have been given by that expert witness, we have to give those. That goes from the analyst at the state police lab at Albany, to the state trooper that's been certified as a drug recognition expert who comes out to the scene. Every proficiency test that they've given, we have to turn that over for the last ten years. And the questions become, and we've asked this question to the governor's office, to state legislative leaders, how do we turn over something that we don't have within fifteen days? Right now, we have a rape that occurs of collective sexual offense, having a collection kit. It can take months for us to get that serology and DNA test back, to find out, was there semen, was there sperm, whose DNA does it match up to? If we sense a blood test out on a fatal collision, do we know if they're high on drugs, if they're high on alcohol, what their VAC wants? We have to send those out to a lab, and it literally takes us months to get those back. Right now, we can make an arrest, we can arraign the defendant, file charges, with the idea that we're going to get that while the case is pending, and we can turn it over. We've had that question of, well, do we have to turn this over within fifteen days, and if so, does that mean we simply can't make an arrest? Again, drug cases where we can do a presumptive field test, and it comes back for positive per cocaine, but we don't know, but we can't try the case on a presumptive field test, we have to get an analyst report from Albany. And a few weeks ago, DA Fitzpatrick, the DA McNamara from Anita County, met with the head of Department of Criminal Justice Services for the state, to pose these questions. And essentially, initially it was, you guys are overreacting, that's not what the law requires. Until DA Fitzpatrick went through and said, well, here's the statute, let's go through it. And then it was, you guys might be right. And essentially, the understanding that was reached is, any case where the results are determinative. So again, the blood test results, toxicology test, that'd be a big lie. Drug test on a adult substance case, the computer forensics on a child pornography case, where you have to actually have those results in order to go forward, essentially, we have to provide that certification within fifteen days. That's the understanding right now, that we have to stick the DA's association, and so what we're going to end up with, and I'm trying to prepare you all for this, is there are going to be people that, when they get arrested, where the police agencies, in order to be able to prosecute, they're going to have to cut the guy loose. We get a fatal collision where we don't have a breath test that night, and we have to get a blood test, the sheriff's office will be able to make an immediate arrest based on the fact that the guy appears to be impaired, appears to be intoxicated, gets, cut him loose, and hope he comes back. You know, that drug dealer who's selling heroin coming up from Syracuse and selling lots, it's going to be catch or release. We interview you, we collect that evidence, we secure the drugs, we're going to have to send it out to the lab, we'll get the results back in three months, hopefully we can find you to actually come back and arrest you. This was created with very little thought, with what the practical order of consequences are.
Hold on. Greg, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What facilities we got to test, doing all this testing, where do you have to go? I mean, say today.
Right. Today, we send everything out to the state police crime lab at Albany. They tend to be at fault for most upstate counties. Very few upstate counties actually have their own forensic center. Onadoga County's fortunate enough to have one, the Waller Howard Center. Niagara County has their own, I think Albany does. But basically, that's, that's pretty much it. And Waukesha County does as well. Last year, we reached out to the Waller Howard Center, that's Onadoga County, to say, kind of anticipating some of this coming, but we actually had a case, some significance. We said, look, can you guys do the testing for us? Onadoga will pay you, but we know we're going to get the results back in a lot quicker time. They said, we can't. But basically, Albany and just, I'm sorry, Onadoga County decided they're going to take care of their own cases. Because they started dealing with cases for Swigato and Madison and Kioga, they were being delayed in some of the Onadoga County cases. So they were essentially told, you're in-house, you're dealing with Onadoga hopefully. We're trying to figure out what we're going to do. There's a lab out of Pennsylvania, I don't know if it has. Basically, some of the DA's offices are working to see if we can coordinate, like a kind of consortia, actually, what's it called? Seventh is Thursday? Whatever. This Thursday, there's a group of us that are having a teleconference call with that group, to find out if we were all band together, is there some better price that we can get? The issue with them is, state police, it takes a long time to get the results, but they don't charge us for testing, they don't charge us to have somebody come and testify. This lab, the private lab, they're going to pay for every service that we have. But quite frankly, you know, even Onadoga County, through the medical examiner's office, yeah, they reached out to me this last week, and I think according to T F L, said, you know, look, in order for us to get you all the information to beat a homicide case, again, whether it's a murder, whether it's a fatal, DWI accident, or something like that, for us to comply, we're going to have to put a lot of resources in place to get the medical examiners to record events, any hand notes they've taken, any photographs of all of our internal records, basically the calibration records for all of our equipment. Essentially, we are now going to have to, we are likely going to have to charge you, essentially, evidence collection fee, uncut with the cost for the autopsy, just to meet these obligations. If you haven't made a firm decision, Dr. Revercom basically said, this is probably going to happen, I'm just giving you a heads up. So, you know, I created, basically, trying to figure out what's going to happen next year, and playing this out as to what we're going to have to actually do, what we're going to have to actually do, is the DA's office starts analyzing, collecting, turning over information. I had requested four full-time ADAs, four part-time ADAs, two paralegals, three typists, and a technology assistant at the DA's office. In the recommended budget that's been submitted to you, it's recommended to have three full-time ADAs, two part-time ADAs, one paralegal, one typist, the technology assistant position wasn't created, and I didn't put it on here, because it's not strictly a discovery, and I also asked for a deputy coroner position, so rather than myself, for Mark Moody, my chief ADA, going out to a buggy vehicle collision on a 104, dealing with that, we're going to be focused on legal matters, and we have to be dealing with it in the office. So that's, that's the background as to why I'm requesting, what I'm requesting. I think I've been able to talk to most of you over the last few days and last week. Honestly, when's the positions that are recommended in the proposed budget, I'm not sure it's going to be enough. In fact, my gut tells me it probably isn't. I'm willing to start with those positions for now, to see what that allows us to do. Necessity is the mother of invention, so we're going to try to make do with what we can, and try to figure out what procedural changes we can put in place, what efficiencies we can put in place. But the difficulty, quite frankly, is this law takes effect January first. And initially, when it got passed, we were thinking, okay, so any case arrested after January first, this is going to apply to you. No. They said, actually, the triggering event's an arraignment, so if somebody was arrested on December 20th, and they were given an appearance ticket to be arraigned January 2nd, all this is going to apply to them. So we started figuring out, well, which arraignment's going to take place after January? And then, one of the guys, this guru guy in Asok County that's working on a lot of this, went through and said, actually, this may apply to any open pending case that hasn't been resolved, or plea at least hasn't been entered. So if it's pending, so we are, as an office, trying to look through, you know, it's the hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of cases we have open right now. We try to figure out, can we somehow manage to get discovery compliance for that, quite frankly? It is a impossible task. And again, this is taking effect January first, even when these positions go, get approved, I'm still going to have to advertise, hire somebody, which is going to take weeks, get somebody trained, trying to find people across the thorough experience that might be able to do this, but quite frankly, we are behind the nape ball right now, and we're not going to have the people in place from January 1st, which is the way we need to be in full compliance. The first few months of next year are going to be tough. And I'm going to tell you right now, we are focusing on felonies, focusing on violent offenses, sex offenses, home embasement burglaries, we're, you know, after that, focusing, once we get through the felonies, on serious misdemeanor assaults, sexual offenses, cases where kids are being harmed. But to be honest, the ten dollar petty larceny at Walmart, not high on the priority list. But frankly, the three hundred dollar larceny at Walmart, because they don't want to hire cashiers, instead of free through the self-checkout, well, I guess that's the cost of doing business we're doing. We have to prioritize vehicle and traffic tickets, definitely going to ask that people purchase. The first few months of the year, it's going to be reducing pretty much everything, go parking ticket, hopefully, because there's no way we can collect it, thousands of traffic tickets. We're going to have to adapt, but it's going to take time. It's going to take time.
So, what I'm going to do is here, page 12 starts your budget, then pertains to most of drug offenders, then you have your salaries and wages start, we'll be the DA's office through page 19 every year. So right now, we're talking page 12, one line on there, salary and wages through, page 19, you have an increase in that, in those about 464,000, most attributed to what we see here, with stabbing and technology with the criminal justice reforms, correct?
Yeah, most, most of it's due to that jury. And welcome to that. One of the other factors that were accounted for, besides the criminal justice reforms, discovery, balance, trial, it's come January 1st, Swigato County, early next year, we're going to have a centralized arraignment court. Several years ago, the Court of Appeals passed...
This committee's been updated on that.
The centralized arrangement. Some part of it is also being able to staff the centralized arrangement court, that's going to take place seven nights and seven mornings a week, 365 days a year, on top of what we're doing.
That centralized arraignment, to me, is asinine at this point, since nobody's going to be able to be arraigned. I mean, you're going to get an appearance ticket, you're not going to be going down there, you've already made it so that we're not going to be able to do anything, so why keep, I mean, if you're going to have something very serious that actually goes in, it's not going to be that often, and can a judge get up for just those very few? This is ridiculous.
You're making the same argument that I've been making since I've been in the office.
But this, but this...
We have been trying to sell them, no, I'm telling you, they don't care.
But with this new law, it changes everything.
And then, and on top of that whole thing too, our CAP program, the way it's set up now, as it revised, my understanding, as they saw, that part of the towns will be doing their own arraignment, and part of their, part of the whole be, so...
We're in...
Quite honestly, yeah, and we're going to be paying double that, so...
Now, essentially, for the arraignment, the Court of Appeals said that, you know, the defendant's entitled to an attorney at every critical point in the process, and they said the arraignment is a critical point in the process. And so, part of the benefit, if you will, for having a centralized arrangement part, still, is it's going to save money on the assigned council program, and potentially from fire office to the centralized arrangement part, because since the arraignment is determined at the moment, it starts discovery, and the defense can make all sorts of negotiations, some of the speedy trial portion, and again, right now, if somebody gets arrested, bail gets set up, they can ask for review off the county court, or the county judge. If the court sets bail on them, their entire case, actually a probable cause hearing, and to revisit and actually have a mini hearing, if you will, is to wonder if this is appropriate bails, or appropriate, the least restrictive, alternative to mandatory, all sorts of new For Sarah Davis, the assigned council program, to have somebody, to have her arraigned if it takes place, because right now, the judges get up in the middle of the night, do the arraignment, without an attorney. Downstate, there were a couple of judges that got grieved because of that, and the court system intervened and said, look, they don't have the ability to do it, and essentially, O C A kind of used that as a wedge to say, look, as long as you're moving towards a way to get an attorney there. As part of the discovery reform and all this, they basically told judges, you cannot roll that hang up, conduct an arraignment without an attorney being present. So, right now, in Scruple, if they go to Judge Rosari at 2:00 AM, he can't get an attorney there, he cannot do the arraignment. Again, after January 1st, we need the cat court, so that we can have attorneys there, so we can actually do the business that needs to be done. And originally, that is centralized, Sarah, the assigned counsel, can have one or two attorneys there, rather than trying to send out twelve attorneys, have to 12 different courts, that particular night, you're paying twelve attorneys times one or two hours.
The prosecutor, Pat?
He's curious, says, when your committee was working on the budget, how much of this were you aware of?
What do you mean?
How much of this stuff, this new rule here?
When we were working on it?
Additional costs, more attorneys and paralegals, how much of this were you aware that you needed, the one in...
I don't understand your question.
But when you were working on the budget?
Yeah.
How much of this stuff were you aware of? Did you know what was going to happen?
Oh, yeah, we knew this was coming down. We didn't know the extent of what the cost was going to be, or how integral, all this stuff kind of came after, you know, the right legislation, and then the details come afterwards, is what happens. So this has just been coming out since, what, July, August, at the earliest?
A hundred versions.
Yeah, but they're still tweaking it here and there, so we're never going to know the end of it. And like the DA referenced... And like the DA referenced, I mean, what he asked for there and what's in here are two different proposals. And the reason for that is, because we really don't know. I mean, quite honestly, this is the unknown. It's taking a dartboard and throwing darts at it and saying, well, this may be what it is, this may not. So quite honestly, this, the sheriff, the DA, the probation, and 911, it's kind of a shot in the dark with seeing what's going to happen, because nowhere's in the state have we ever done this before.
Phil, Legislative Potter, a lot of, if you look, read down through the budget, you'll see that the comments column, a lot of the lines that are affected by this, where the increases are, there's an explanation in that column. So you can see what, which increases are tied directly to the state mandate.
Let's hear it.
How far off from the public safety study that we did, what, a year and a half, three years ago?
More than that. It's three years ago.
Was it three years ago?
Three years ago.
That's two years ago.
The study had four, four on his chair, so it was, and I've been, this is my second year being chair, so it's three years of the study.
How far off from that study's recommendations as to what our district attorney's office should be manned at, and also the sheriff's department at the same time was in there? How far off?
Pretty much with this new legislation that came out, study's absolutely.
But Frank, Frank, forget your point. I think I understood it. If we're looking at the status quo as of right now, say there's not a new law until January 1st. When the public safety study came back, it said that the DA's office should have four full-time attorneys more than we had when the study started, a paralegal more, I think a secretary more, and two deputy coroners more than we had. We have two new ADAs that started earlier this year, and the plan was up in Albany, add an ADA, a paralegal next year, and an ADA in the third year out. But again, if we're looking at the status quo as of today, we're doing the study, right now, I need two full-time ADAs, paralegal, a secretary, a deputy coroner, short. Based on the CGR study, what I need to be efficient right now? So.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. This isn't any different than what was, you know, was suggested, you know, and recommended out of the study that we did, you know, two and a half, three years ago. So, I mean, you are coming up, and we said at that time, we weren't going to implement it all at once, we were going to implement it in segments. But all of a sudden, with these new laws, now we have to come up with it right away. I wasn't against it from the beginning. I said, do what the study said. But what I'm saying is, this isn't new to us, it's just that now, all of a sudden, because of the new laws, it's been progressed, what, a year quicker than what we had suggested, I believe.
Well, yeah.
That's all I'm saying. I'm in favor of what you're, what you're asking for, except for the raises, so I'll be vote no on it because of the raises, that's all.
Okay, good. We'll be right along, then. We want to discuss Drug Task Force in there. There's 14,310 increase, I believe that's mainly due to raises as well, in the fringe to reflect that, or anything different in there that.
Essentially.
Okay, and then stop DWI, that's basically cost neutral for the county.
Correct.
And then coroner has the 107,605 increase, I believe that's, a big chunk of that is attributed to the exams we need to send out for, and that's another issue that you're addressing, that'll hopefully be forthcoming for the 2020 and 2021 budget.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I got a call during the budget process, Dr. Rivercombe took over the DCH, medical director of Long Island County, they essentially have to know in-house staff, they're trying to recruit, they have in-house staff, but essentially, we made a decision, become physically viable and be able to establish, recruit people, they're essentially increasing their, their fee for services 50% pretty much across the board. Some's a little higher, some's a little lower, and the aggregate is about 50% higher for all autopsies, exams, and everything, toxicology, everything associated. So I had to increase my coroner budget to $200,000 to $300,000 in office services.
So at this point in time, let's entertain a motion to send forth Department 1161 Drug Task Force, 1165 District Attorney, Department 1185 Medical Exam Coroners, and Department 3315 Stop DWI. Motion by Legislative Castilla, second by Legislative Tegel. All right, any more discussion? Legislative Klein.
Where you and I discussed this a couple times. My biggest thing with this is it is what it is. The old piss pots are going to basically put on a straight again. The thing is this, Greg, I don't want to see you come back here in seven months, eight months. And I discussed this with you, looking for budget modifications or more money. I, I, we'll pay you what you need, but we do it now during the process right here. Nothing about some lady wanted to leave, we had to pay another one more money, or we had to give a raise to get people here, or whatever the case may be.
And Richard, again, we talked about that, and again, part of what Terry's saying is apparently being a shot in the dark. Again, I know how many cases I have coming in, I have a reasonable idea of how long it's going to take for fair discovery for each one of those. Again, we're going from doing full discovery of about 100 cases to doing it for over 3,000 violations, felonies, and misdemeanors. So multiply the work effort by 30. Now we have to do it for our DNTs. Quite frankly, you could double or triple the size of my office, and I'm not sure we can keep up with all the mandates. And this has been a discussion from every DA's office across the state, is there is no funding from the state, and we're trying to figure out practically how we do this. We're going to try to be reasonable with attorneys, try to grab a solution to see if they'll give us more time than they'll leave, speedy trial provisions. But again, we can't condition officers on them doing so. There's no incentive, there's no, use the phrase that's in the news, quid pro quo, where we could say, hey, you give us this, we'll give you that. We can't even ask. I know you said, ask for what I need or what I think I reasonably need. Again, I'd submitted my initial budget, and as I kept meeting with other DA's, and, you know, I reached out to Phil and said, Phil, I think I shorted myself. I think I need more than what I initially asked for, and went through and kind of explained it. Again, my requests, there's eight, 10, let's see, eight, 10, 14, and again, I forgot the deputy coroner, so 15 positions I asked for, Richard. It's been recommended that I get them. Again, I would love to have all 15. If you're willing to give me all 15, I'll take them, I'll put them where I wish. So when you say, well, ask for them now, because I don't want to add them mid-year, look, I'm asking for them now. If you don't want to give them to me, I get that, that's a budgetary decision, I understand that. But maybe at the end of the day, when I come to you come June or July and say, despite our best efforts, we can't, we can't keep up. And quite frankly, we have to prioritize, and you guys prioritize every single day. You make decisions on budgets, and you have to, that's part of being a leader and elected official. I have to work within the budgets I have, the people that have to make the decisions. Again, if I've got a felony where somebody's hurt, I've got a felony where a kid's hurt, any crime where a kid's hurt, that goes to the top of the pile. You know, the Walmart petty larceny, the possession of marijuana, the possession of cocaine for personal use, those are actually the high priorities. But again, we have to realize that we have to marshal our resources. And again, I don't have the resources, there are consequences, there are outcomes. Look, I spent the entire weekend at the office. I was there at 6:00 on Saturday morning, I was there at 7:00 yesterday, I was there at 5:30 this morning, Richard. I will put in as many hours as I need to get this done, but I can only ask so much of DA's that work for me. You know, I can ask and say, look, I need you to put in more effort and more time, but we now have an obligation come next year, where we're going to have to cover CAP court from 6:00 to 10:30 every night, 365 days a year, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, Ramadan, 4th of July. But I'll be the first one to step up, take the first rotation, and try to lead by example. But at a certain point, there's no additional compensation ultimately for all that additional work. So we talked about raises, again, I've got to try to convince people for the salary that we already earned, to do that much more work come next year. My fear is, look, last year, I got to the point where I said to ADAs, I need you to do more. We lost somebody, I need you to do more. Richard, they told me point blank, I don't want to do more. My spouse makes good money, I don't have to do this job. And I proved it. A week later, one walked out the damn door. I said, you're walking out the door, you're leaving us with more? I don't want to spend my summers sitting here 12 hours a day. And she walked. So that was down two of six. And then a little bit later, the rest of them said, how about this? I can leave this job, go over to county attorney's office, take the exact same salary, walk in at 8:30, walk out at 4:30, I don't have to go to night court, I don't have to be on sex offenses, I don't have to be on calling the bail calls. All right, I go into the county attorney's office, there's number three. Number four was in there, she went over to the court system. I can't force anybody to stay in the job. I can't make them stay. And my fear, Richard, is quite frankly, we don't have adequate resources and staff that come April, come May, some of the more experienced attorneys that we brought on this last year are going to say, how about this? I'm going to open up my own practice again. I love you, Greg, see you later.
Now, what you're saying is that the pay structure's incorrect?
It's not that the pay structure's incorrect, it's just the workload that's being put on those people. Again, if next year, I'm not trying to pick on Kirk, because he's not here, but if next year, we told Kirk, in addition to covering every county highway, you're going to cover every town highway and state highway, we're going to give you three more drivers, we're going to give you two more clowns. You think Kirk could do it? That's essentially what I'm being told right now. All the stuff you used to do, now go do it, and for every single case. Richard, practically, even with the budget that's recommended to people, I'm not sure we can meet the obligations. We're going to try, try to be creative, we have been creative. Except it brings down to law enforcement, the sheriff is fantastic, OPD, FPD about trying to get stuff, they streamlined the action. The moment they get arraigned, we have a clock that starts ticking at 15 days, and there's no negotiation on that, there's no way for them to give it up. I don't know how we do that within 15 days and get it to the defense. And again, if that 15th day is Sunday, well, we got to get it to them on Friday, and we got to be able to verify that they got it. I had to tell you, since this passed, Richard, I've had very little sleep. Orders you made the calendar, I need some sleep. I'm going to tell you, me and every other DA in the state have basically been trying to figure out how we do this. We sat in this room a couple of months ago, eight different DA's offices, you know, the head, elected DA's and myself, trying to figure out how we're going to comply with this. A few weeks ago, most of the upstate DA's got together in Albany to try to figure a way through this. I will say, with the positions being recommended, I'm ahead of where some of my counterparts We've been given a possible task, and we're going to do our best to try to comply. Back at that September 9th, I went down to New York City, Richard. Me and six other DA's from across the state, we justified in front of the State Senate Folks Committee. Jamal Bailey's the chairman of the committee, this guy John Lou was one of the other committee members. Basically, they wanted to know kind of the status update, the implementation. Now, we had seven different DA's from small counties like us in Shakopee, medium counties like Orange and Westchester, and then Erie County, the Bronx, and Queens. So pretty good representation. We're talking Democratic DA's, Republican DA's, every one of us sat and told them, we cannot meet these obligations. We cannot simply collect everything that you want us to collect, analyze it, synthesize it, get it over to the defense within a requisite period of time. You don't get a shit, Richard. And we're trying to point out to them the flaws of this, went through, and I had to tell you, I said, look, we put a pin in this for a year, we do the bail stuff from January, we do the speedy trial stuff, and hold discovery for a year. Said, look, you guys enacted Raise the Age legislation, you passed it in April 2017, it didn't start for a year and a half later, the 16-year-olds, then you gave another year for the 17-year-olds, two and a half years to implement it because you wanted it to work. And it has worked. Give us some time to put resources in place so we can do this. And the response was, we're not here to debate policy. The time for that was back in the spring. They simply don't care. The chairman of the committee, Chairman Bailey, sincerely or insincerely, I'm not sure which, but asked every one of the committee members, so if you guys don't comply, you're not able to do this, what happens? Who gets hurt? And everybody, I didn't tell you, was much more diplomatic to me by the time I was number six in line, I said, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to preemptively answer your question. You know what happens, you wrote the bill, this was your main, if we don't comply, we're going to get an adverse instruction, evidence is going to get precluded, witnesses are going to get precluded, cases are going to get dismissed. Promos are going to walk free, not because they're innocent, not because of anything, but just because we're going to get paperwork together in a sufficient period of time. And who gets hurt? How about the woman and the kids who've been victims of domestic violence for years, and they're finally able to get a voice and speak up? The rape victim who came forward and reported, you know, their boyfriend or some stranger raped her. You know, the senior citizens whose home gets broken into at 2:00 AM, that's who's going to get hurt. And I haven't even mentioned as part of this, but one of the most insidious parts of this whole legislation is, the defendant can make a motion to court to be able to go back and visit a crime scene. Now, again, if it's the pet stop gas station, fine. If it's a rape victim's home, if it's a senior citizen's home, that defendant to be able to come back into their home with their attorney, take pictures, measure out, take diagrams, and can you imagine being some 14-year-old kid who was raped, and now having to let this defendant and his attorney come back in your apartment?
At least he got off with me.
I mean, so when we talk about malice, this is major, major overhaul. The state has taken the criminal justice system and flipped it on its head, and without putting reinforcements in place, I mean, State Attorney General Letitia James got this week. And again, it's not about party politics, but, but she's a progressive Democrat. Same party as the state legislature, same party as the governor, and she cares. But I have to tell you, and again, other DA's are down a lot, but the State Attorney General came out this last week and said, this is unmanageable. We, we as the State Attorney General's office can't meet these obligations. And again, they haven't put resources in place, and quite honestly, about a month ago, in Albany, we met with a representative from the state police. I could go downstairs and talk to Don, he's been fantastic. I could talk to the city BDs, we could work that out. Basically, the state police said, because every DA's reached out to their state police representatives and said, hey, what can we do? Put this system in place? And the order from Ohio from Albany is, do not do anything, do not try to accommodate your DA's, we are the state police, we march in one step, we will have a solution that's going to apply uniform for 62 days, we're not having 62 different procedures. So stand down troopers, stand down sergeants and BCI investigators, we're going to figure out a solution. Well, a question came up last week in another meeting, so what's your solution? We don't know yet. I have a feeling we're going to find out December 3rd first.
Okay, so we have a motion, second on the floor. Any other questions? I know Richard asked some questions. Frank, go ahead. I thought you would have forgotten.
I almost forgot.
All right.
Somebody said, somebody said something about, you know, progressive Democrat like Frank. So all of a sudden, it just spurted right back up there again. Everything that you're saying, Greg, I understand everything, but you know what, those are the cards we're dealt, and we got to deal with the cards that you're dealt. This is not, you know, Texas Hold'em where you can, you know, ask for more cards or something else, but this is, this is what. But this is, this is what you've got, okay? My problem, like I said, is raises, and Richard brought up a, a, a point there, okay? I'm looking at an assistant district attorney that last year, that position was seventy-seven thousand dollars. But because somebody was gonna walk out the door, and if they needed, they needed more money, so we, so in order to bring somebody in, we made that, the classification, that job eighty-four thousand dollars. Now, that job is eighty-seven thousand dollars. So in a year, we've gone up almost ten thousand dollars for the same position. And yes, the workload is a lot, but the workload is a lot. And I'm sorry, I, you know, I, like Richard, you know, Richard's saying, you know, we're not gonna keep saying, this is what it is, and you don't like it, I'm sorry, yes, we are overburdening you, it is tough. If my wife was here, she'd be kicking me in the butt, 'cause she thinks you guys should get everything under the sun. But I'm sorry, I can't, okay? I can't, I can't vote for raises, and I mean, and I'm sorry, I wanna look at your own rate, your own salary here, okay? Now, if next year, okay, when I'm not here, but let's say in July, they give the judges a fifty thousand dollar raise, well, guess what? The DA gets a fifty thousand dollar raise, you guys know that. Okay, so where, where are you going? Okay, that's, that's all my point.
And the state gives a seventy-two thousand dollar reimbursement.
Wow, yeah, I understand, I, and I'm gonna say, look, you, you can't, you, you, I know you guys like the joke and you lump me in with, you know, with what goes on up there, and you guys know, and everybody knows me, I don't go along with everything they say up there. I don't believe everything they say. And if it was me, these dangling ten million dollars out there left and right, well, why don't you give us the, the fun, you know, fund the mandates, and we won't need your ten million dollars. We don't care to get that, we don't care to get these things. Funds, mandates, take care of what you're supposed to be taking care of. That's what I, that's what I'm saying, but I'm not gonna be voting in favor of anybody's budget that's got raises in it, and it's only because of that. Not because you don't need the people, I'll give you the people, but I won't give you the raises, sorry. That's it, goodbye.
Margaret, do you have anything?
Well, I just added, of course, I, nice, I heard everything about what you've said. Uh, one thing that was added too, is that the nine-one-one, they needed more people there, and they're nine-one-one.
We're gonna get to that in the nine-one-one.
Fifteen, I know, fifteen day, whatever, to you. So was this here given to Phil what you needed before he made the budget up to us?
Yeah.
Anything?
And again, um, in my budget explanation letter, I think it was like an eight-page letter, kind of a chapter, verses.
Like, give it to our, to us.
And, and again, initially, I'm gonna tell Margaret, I guess I'm a little bit gun-shod. I was very conservative, probably too conservative when I asked for initially, just trying to say, what am I realistically gonna get? I basically underpinned myself and had a conversation with Phil, and he asked, what can you actually need? What do you think you're gonna get, and what do you need? Well, what do I need? Well, this is closer to what I need. But I can tell you, my request isn't just for my, my positions. I know the sheriff's gonna talk about positions that he needs, be able to comply with this, as well as the cap court. Again, if the sheriff doesn't get his extra positions, does no good to give me mine, 'cause I'm gonna have a vacuum of information. If you don't give Catherine the person that he's asked for, again, he may need more down the road too. Again, if I don't get the nine-one-one calls and cap reports, they're no good for the deputy to investigate it, interview, take photographs, they're no good for us unless we get that. So, and again, DAs kind of adjust to his resources and their obligations.
That is what they were saying, you and him and him had to get this together.
No, we, we have done, now we've worked this group, and after you're done addressing Greg's, we'll, we'll go.
Right, 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 we're, we're gonna meet, we're gonna get into all these other department issues. So, right now, I have a motion and a second, and we're gonna be very frank with you. We're coming back on Thursday at noon, so if you can't be here Thursday at noon, please let me know. All the department heads have to be here, anywhere for finance and personnel. There's no way we're gonna be able to get through, and the people who will have to be, the health committee can go and get lunch.
So you're asking us to do it right now? Raise, what are you asking us right now, to do?
I'm asking you to approve the budget that's set in front of you and move it along to finance and personnel. We already have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? All in favor on the district attorney's portion, say aye. All right, any opposed? Stands approved. Okay, now we're gonna, right now, for the, for the legislators, I wanna know, Frank, can you be here noon on Thursday?
Noon Thursday.
Legislators who are committee members for public safety, can you be here noon on Thursday?
Two o'clock, I got a two o'clock meeting.
Okay, well.
I got a two o'clock meeting, I gotta pee today, I believe.
Here?
Maybe it's four o'clock, maybe nothing. I can be here.
You can be here at noon?
I'll be here.
Okay. We're gonna go into E-911, I know you'll have a portion of this, you've got one position. And then after that?
Sure.
Not according, not according to the bad order. You're gonna be way larger than nine-one-one, so I gotta go.
We can give you, we can give you an hour already. You'll be added out.
What time Thursday?
Noon on Thursday.
Noon on Thursday.
Cutting it close, but I might be late.
I mean, all the department heads have to be here, anywhere for finance and personnel, so that's where we're just gonna go. Kevin, so if you wanna go into your portion, then we'll, we'll recess after that till Thursday.
Okay, so to jump into the discovery issues and how they impact nine-one-one, the biggest thing is recordings, pulling our phone recordings, pulling our radio recordings. It, it's literally gonna require somebody to sit and listen to all of the incidents within the timeframe, all of the phone calls.
Page forty-nine for nine-one-one.
About what it is. And, you know, trying to, you know, pull all of that information, save it, file it where it's supposed to be sent, for not just the sheriff, but the state police, for all the other law enforcement agencies, as well as fire EMS, where the combined incidents, where that just becomes a huge and rude task. So if you, you know, just reference my monthly reports, in September, we had ten requests for recorded audio files. And that took us about, it was about three and a half, I think it was almost three hours that long, just for those ten requests. If we're talking requests, you know, three thousand plus to fifteen thousand vehicle and traffic, that's a crazy amount. Right now, it takes us approximately fifteen minutes or so to pull a basic recording and can package to give over to the DA's office. With doing the fifteen thousand plus of those for D and Ts, we'll probably get it a little bit quicker, but it depends on how long the actual traffic, you know, violation, the incident actually takes, 'cause we need to sit and listen for that entire timeframe. There's unfortunately no technology that can be put in place of this. We would put a person there, or persons there, to sit and listen to that and hold that information to be able to provide it to the defense, so. So at this point in time, I'm requesting one, one person, looking at the statistics based off of the DA's information, should be more like three, but we're starting with one, called a nine-one-one recording analyst, is what the position is for. Then we're going to be modifying the train coordinator, operations coordinator, and then communications technician jobs, as well as I'll be jumping in and doing full recordings myself to make sure that coverage is taken care of, so. We got a major increase in policy and procedures, we're gonna have to make some big changes on our side on that. So I think I got a couple of other slides as well. Just kinda goes in there, it's a small kind of different reading here, but you can read them in your packets as far as the, what that person will specifically be doing. But, you know, the big issue is having somebody sitting, physically listening recordings, as well as trying to find somebody that can actually do it, so. So real quickly there, I just pulled the numbers together based off of what, what Greg had pulled of two thousand eighteen. And, you know, pretty much looking at about five thousand hours per year of recorded media that's going to need you reviewed and then, I mean, take an incident like the shooting that we had on down at forty-nine with that state police, we, we spent about four hours pulling that information that was needed for that particular incident, so. So you have some bigger incidents, it's gonna take more time. So, so at this point in time, looking at one per, one person because of this, as well as it's gonna impact the rest of our staff, so.
We don't need the language. Get another, another, get a motion on here.
So that's my impact as far as, that's my impact as far as the automatic discovery piece. Like I said, I think it'll probably end turning into more down the road, if it is as bad as it looks like it's going to be, but that's where I'm starting off with my original request.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for nine-one-one, and then we'll get into other discussions on that department. So a motion by legislator Potter, second by legislator Castilla, discussion.
So real quick, our increases, our position, we also added the mobile data cellular service that we had previously added in two thousand nineteen budget, so that, that's reflected in here as an increase. And beyond that, increase of my particular salary, went from thirty-five hours to forty hours. Offset by budget, or by grant stuff, we have, have money in there to replace the workstations for the nine-one-one center. Those workstations have been in use twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five for twenty-three years now. So we're looking at replacing those, and the work that goes along with that. Also, Jefferson County is going to be turning their radio system on in two thousand twenty, and they'll be utilizing our microwave system passing through us to get to Onondahie County. They're replacing two links, our link from Old Water Tower to Baldwin Falls Water Tower, Baldwin Falls, Onondahie, nine-one-one. That'll give us some increased capacity, so we're using some of our grant money to, to stop jumping across the edge of the lake and go into Mexico, and then come across, which will be a lot more reliable link there. And then adding recording capabilities to nine-one-two, are some of the big things there. We do have a new lease that we're finalizing with AT&T at Old Water Tower as a co-location, so that the increase rate is in there, as well as the annual three percent increases across the board on the other co-locations that we have, so. That's some of the high-level stuff. Wanted to bring up.
I have a motion and a second, now discussion. Are you none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, um, just to do a little, small, a couple of these small departments to get them in and out of the way. Page six is there, one. That is a payment of ten thousand dollars, that's something that we continue to have with Onondahie County. Sheriff Conway is unable to be here today with us, and we told him, we appreciate his efforts to get here, but we understand that it is scheduled as well. I have a motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trudell, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last one, before we recess, I'll go to page seventy-six, EMO EMS, basically a wash.
Now we are making one smaller.
There was a request for twenty-nine fifty-seven, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars for max casualty incident training, based out of.
That's included in this though, already, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's already in, so yeah. Yeah, it's already covered, so it's not a change.
No, no.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on that, discussion, motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Castilla. All right, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, coming up on Thursday, I have sheriff probation, prior advisory. Unless, prior advisory, are you pretty solid? Moving here, maybe?
I'll be here Thursday.
You'll be here anyways? All right, it's not rushing for anyone, everybody to be rushing, and there's people that wanna get lunch, I know. I'm not sure they're just.
I just wanna say one thing, Greg, I know why you're tired, you know?
Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to recess until twelve o'clock this Thursday. Motion by legislator Castilla, second by legislator Potter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.